We'll open the curriculum workshop. Welcome, Mr. D'Nazzo, Ms. Farati. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. So, good evening and thank you. Hi, Jared, how are you? Good to see you. So, we were asked here tonight to present regarding our upcoming manufacturing program that we're putting together. For those of you who have not met our assistant principal, I know she's introduced herself to many of you, but this is our new assistant principal, Amy Farati. She comes to us last May and has spent several days over the summer acclimating herself to our school community and really taking the initiative with this manufacturing program. So, we're going to spend the next, you know, 20 or so minutes talking about the vision for the manufacturing program here. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Farati and I will interject when it's appropriate. But again, as the project lead for this program, I'm going to turn it over to her and allow her to give you some information about where we're going.
Thank you. So, thank you all for having me come out today. I'm really passionate about the work that East Haven is implementing here at the high school, and I was really excited that I became the lead on this project. So, first of all, when I took on this role, I actually had to go and look up, okay, what exactly is manufacturing? Because in my mind, I picture a lot of different things. So, we're talking about manufacturing here in Connecticut, the businesses that we're going to be hopefully partnering with. What does it actually mean? So, if you take a raw piece of material, and so most of the time, we're looking at a piece of, a block of aluminum, and we're creating a new product. So, here's an example right here is they took that block of aluminum and they're making that horse out of it using one of the machines that we're hoping to purchase here at East Haven High School. Another example, and this we actually saw firsthand when we did a site visit to Platt Tech, is they took a solid block of aluminum and they made really unique chess pieces and an entire chess board. And so, it really piqued my interest because I think these are things that kids can really, it's a, sorry, they can do physically, they can use their hands, it's a kinesthetic model, and so kids can get really involved in the manufacturing process. So, here, I'm going to show you an example of a video of one of the machines that we're looking to buy, and in this example, the machine is actually making a chess piece out of a piece of aluminum. Now, you can see it actually come to shape, and then that last bit comes off, and it becomes one of the rooks, if I'm correct. If I'm, any chess players out there, right? It was a rook. So, that's something that the kids will be able to hopefully make here at East Haven High School as one of their projects. And I was questioning, okay, why manufacturing? Why are we going to push manufacturing onto the students? Is there any jobs for them? What's the job outlook? So, I looked at the department, now, mind you, all of these stats, this is just for Connecticut. This is not a nationwide, global, all these stats I'm about to present to you are just here in Connecticut. So, if you look, the overall trend since 1990 is we've had a very, very large decrease of manufacturing jobs here in Connecticut alone. In 1990, you had over 300,000, and now currently in 2021, we are just below 150, and obviously you see in 2020, there was a dip there due to the COVID virus. So, then I looked, in 1999, we currently had 300,000 manufacturing jobs here in Connecticut alone. Then in 2012, that number dropped to 150, and so the question is, why? Why did we have such a drop in our employment of manufacturing jobs in Connecticut? So, back in 1990, a lot of companies realized it was a lot cheaper to make their products if we outsourced them to other companies, to other countries. So, we outsourced them to India and China where we didn't have to pay the workers as much as you would in Connecticut. But then, we started to see these jobs coming back into Connecticut, and that was because those countries were no longer as cheap as they once were for workers. You know, people in China, they started getting mortgages and cars, and that meant they needed a higher wage every day. So, it wasn't as, cost, it wasn't as, it wasn't beneficial to the companies any longer to outsource those jobs. So, they came back into Connecticut. And Connecticut companies also started using different techniques, and one of them is called lean manufacturing, and it's this idea of, in the workforce, there's no waste and there's organization. So, when everything is organized and you have very minimal waste, you're going to save a lot of money. So, it made it much more profitable for companies to come back and use the workforce here in Connecticut for their manufacturing jobs. In 1996, the workforce 55-plus for manufacturing jobs in Connecticut was at 18%, and in 2018, we see that this is now 35%. So, we have another problem in the manufacturing, in manufacturing companies, is that we have an aging workforce. We have not a lot of young people entering the field, but we have a lot of people who are looking soon to exit the field. So, we have this gap, and we have the need to fill it right here in Connecticut. And then currently, as of today, we need 6,000 manufacturing jobs in Connecticut alone. So, that means that our students here at East Haven High School, they're going to leave with a new skill, and they could actually go into the workforce immediately and make a really decent earning. So, what does this mean for our community? So, first of all, we're going to focus on our students. We want to prepare them for college and careers. We're going to have, the students are going to gain job skills that they can find a job immediately after they leave the doors of East Haven High School, and they're also going to have skills that's going to help them in college majors, anything in the STEM field. So, any future engineer student that we have here at East Haven High School, they're also going to benefit from taking a manufacturing course with us as well. Then we looked at outside of the walls of the high school, and we said, well, how could this actually benefit our entire community? And so, we saw, we met with local businesses, and we listened to what their concerns were, and we thought, well, we might be able to help you by training the students here at East Haven High School for the jobs that you currently have. And so, it's not only going to benefit students and what their future is, but it's also going to benefit our community members. And we're also looking to partner with different community colleges to come into, and they can actually offer adult education courses as well. So, now we have a roadmap, and we looked at where did this process start, and then where are we today? And Vinnie's actually going to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so, thank you. So, Amy did a great job talking about the what, the what manufacturing is, and now we're going to talk about how we kind of got there. So, back in the winter of last year, we actually received, and superintendent received a phone call from State Senator Chicarella, who up at the Capitol had been connected with some lobbyists and some individuals in the manufacturing field. And one of them was a gentleman named Jamison Scott, who was the president of manufacturer CUT at the time, he no longer is. And they asked if we could have a sit-down for a meeting. So, we did, and we talked about what manufacturing looks like in Connecticut. Those 6,000 jobs that Ms. Farati mentioned, only 3,000 per year are being filled in the state of Connecticut. So, there are 3,000 unfilled manufacturing jobs in Connecticut per year. What does that mean for our students? So, we had that sit-down back in the winter, started to have some internal conversations. In the spring of last year, we met with Goodwin College, their representative, Matt DeDonna. We met with representatives from Haas, which is one of the major industry machinists with respect to the CNC machines that you saw in the video. Back in June, we met with Mayor Kifora and Ray Baldwin from the town, who had an opportunity to meet with us and discuss what impact this manufacturing program can have on the town of East Haven. And back in July, Mr. Hennessy was gracious enough to host at his business location, Mr. Baldwin, myself, the mayor, Ms. Farati, and several businesses in town, where they gave us some really valuable feedback with respect to what, some of the issues they find relative to hiring good, employable, both adults and anybody over the 18, age of 18. And we had a real great conversation about how this can not just impact our students here at East Haven High School, but how it can impact the greater East Haven community at large. So, we had a really great meeting, which led to, again, bringing in some reps. The goal for us this year is throughout the next several months, purchase the machinery and do some of the groundwork. The goal is that by winter of 2021, December-ish, we'll have our staff trained, we'll have our curriculum in place, we'll continue to communicate to East Haven businesses, we'll communicate to East Haven families, communicate to East Haven students what the benefit of this program is. I think there's a misnomer that this is for students who are not college-bound, that's not the case at all. It's for both students who are college-bound and on a college track, and also students who might not know what their path is relative to where they want to go after East Haven High School. So, that's where the kind of the vision is for us to be this winter, with the January of our installation of machines down in our shop downstairs. We're retrofitting a space right now, which we'll talk about a little bit later. And then, our students sitting in seats, having an opportunity to take the courses that we're offering in semester two of this year, which begins in February. So, that's kind of the roadmap of how this started. It's been a complete community effort with respect to our elected officials. Our board has been very supportive, obviously our superintendent's office is supportive. That's the roadmap of where we started, where we're going, and I think the opportunities are really endless after we really get this thing off the ground. We had some really great visits in that kind of roadmap. We had great calls with Lyman Hall High School in Wallingford and their leaders of their programs. We had a great visit to Platt Tech last week, and a week and a half ago, they came out to see our space. So, we're really getting some great guidance with respect to where we want to go. So, Ms. Farati, take it back over.
So, what does it look like at East Haven High School? So, this manufacturing program is not just going to be something that lives at East Haven High School, that's just going to be focused just on certain population of students. We're looking for it to really encompass more than that. So, we're looking for community partnerships, we're looking for places where we can send our students for internship opportunities. We're also looking at every student who walks the halls here in East Haven High School. We're looking for the student who wants to go to college, and we're also looking for the student who is not college-bound but is, will be career-ready once they leave East Haven High School. So, we started talking to a couple of community colleges. We were talking to Goodwin. We also are in the works of talking to Gateway Community College because they have been trying for years now to get a manufacturing program up and running at Gateway. And then, we also are talking to Housatana Community College. So, that means for our students that there's a possibility for them to earn college credit while they are taking one of our courses here at the high school. We're also collaborating with local businesses and industry members. So, we're looking for internship, workforce experiences, and also the skills and knowledge necessary for the work in the industry. We had a meeting, I want to say it was back in July, where we brought community businesses here to our high school, and we walked them around, and we showed them the work that we were doing here with all of our Connecticut, our career and technical education courses. And one of the things that I'm most excited about is I want to know from the people in industry, what skills should our students know when they walk out the door? So, believe it or not, I am not a carpenter. I cannot build a house. I can, I'm pretty, pretty good with IKEA furniture, I think that's the extent of my knowledge. But, so that means down in the woodshop, I don't really know the skills that one student might need in order to go work for a construction company. And so, we've made those connections now with local businesses, and they can tell me, okay, I want my future employees to know A, B, and C. And so, we can help build that into the curriculums here at East Haven High School. And so, we want to continue that conversation with the businesses because we want to make sure that our students are going to be the best ones to be employed with any East Haven And then, we had to work on identifying which courses we were going to offer here at East Haven. So, we're hoping to start with manufacturing 101 come late January, early February. They're going to be introduced to concept of production, logistics, and inventory controls and the relationships of the local global economy. There's also going to be a course eventually on the principles of manufacturing math. So, that is a great course because a lot of times, students struggle in a typical math class because they can't, they're having difficulty applying it or understanding, okay, what does this actually mean in my life? Whereas, this course here, it's real-world application of math. So, they're going to use the math to program the machine to create the item. Then we also have CNC machining. CNC stands for computer numeric control, so you're using a computer to control the actual machine. So, that goes into coding of the machine and telling it, you know, which direction to turn and when. Metrology and calibration, this one I think I am most excited about. I was told by our connection with Platt Tech that this one is where he finds most women excel rather than the male students, and it's because we have an eye for detail, and I couldn't agree more. So, that is actually the scientific study of measurement. So, when you're putting a piece that you've made in the machine onto an airplane that, you know, I'm taking down to Florida next April, I want to know that that bolt that was created is made perfectly. I don't want it to be off by even a hair. So, that's what metrology is. It's making sure that everything that's created with these machines, they go through a process where they are checked and double-checked, and they use large microscopes to make sure that everything is cut perfectly so that the wing of the airplane does not fall off as I'm heading down to Florida. Students will also use CAD and CAM machines, so that's software that they'll be using in order to use the machines that we're hoping to purchase. And then, finally, lean manufacturing. This was brand-new that I just learned about recently when we visited Platt Tech, and this introduces students to the philosophical background and the history of the concepts of lean manufacturing. And this is where everything gets organized, there is no waste, so that we make sure that we're doing everything the most efficient way. So, our space and equipment. So, we reached out to Goodwin College, who came in a few times now. We also talked to the representative from Haas, and they looked at the space downstairs, and they gave us a lot of recommendations, and now we're in the process of changing that space over to our manufacturing area. We also got feedback from local businesses when they came out to visit us as well, as what their suggestions were. Couple weeks ago, we went to visit Platt Tech High School in Milford. They're building a brand-new facility, but we were touring the older one, and we just looked at their setup. And one of the things we took away from there is we liked how they had the machines around the perimeter, and then the inside was like a horseshoe of a workbench, so that this, no matter where the students were working, the teacher can see them either working on the workbench, on the computers, or on the machines, and we don't have separate rooms. So, that was something we took away from that visit. We're going to remove the carpet downstairs, which actually happened today, so that was very exciting, and then we'll epoxy the floors. We have to install Phase 3 power and also compressed air. So, machines. Now, when they first started throwing out the names of these machines, I literally had no idea what they did. So, I went to my trusty friend, Google, and I looked them up, I watched videos to understand what it was that they do. So, these are the three machines that we're looking to purchase. We have the mini-mill, the tool mill machine, and also the desktop mill. They all do things a little bit differently, and we're hoping that the students will be able to understand all three of them after they've gone through the program here at East Haven High School. Now, finally, Mr. D'Nazzo is going to talk about, well, how does this relate to the vision of the graduate here for East Haven High School?
Thank you, and thank you, Amy, for that. I also wanted to also thank, and I failed to do so before, I apologize, Bob. Bob Swann was really instrumental in setting us up with Dave Tuttle over at Platt Tech. Bob was, spent part of his career at Platt Tech, like several decades ago, right, Bob? So, but he spent some of his time over there, and he was really instrumental in setting us up at Platt Tech, and Randall Osborne as well, who's been a really great resource for us because, again, many of the machinery that we're looking at talks about coding and a lot of things that are going to tie directly into our technology infrastructure here. So, I want to thank Bob and Randall as well. I also want to thank RJ, who's been there with us as every step of the way with respect to, you know, how this from an operational standpoint would fit into our school, and of course, Erica and Jen from their endless support with respect to making this work here at East Haven High School. So, kind of wrapping this up, this is really innovative and it's really exciting work that we're doing here. We're really kind of thrilled with the opportunity that our students will be able to have once they, once we get this machinery in front of them, and our instructors trained on how to teach the use of machines and really dive into the curriculum. We're excited about the partnerships and the things that that could open doors for our students down the road, whether it be through community internships and/or college opportunities or post-secondary opportunities. Where does this tie in ultimately for us as a school community? Well, it ties directly to our vision of the graduate, and I passed out a one-page kind of executive summary of what our vision of the graduate is, and we haven't really spent a whole lot of time talking about that yet, but it's work that we're continuing to do on a, you know, kind of daily basis. We spent a lot of time last, last school year in the evenings with, you know, a subcommittee of staff members that have really worked to identify what are five attributes of our vision of the graduate. This is what we want our students to be able to do. These are the key attributes that we want our students to have when they leave our school system in 12th grade, and this is a kindergarten through 12th grade continuum. We want them to be responsible citizens, and when we heard feedback from the businesses that we went out and visited and came to us, one of the things they talked about was, again, the challenge that they have to find good, employable individuals who are willing to show up, willing to work, come to work every day, have a great positive attitude, contribute to the workforce, and ultimately, if you look at kind of the skills under that attribute of responsible citizen, that's what it's talking about, knowing your role with respect to being part of an organization. Two, goal-directed and resilient. We want our students to have, obviously, goals that they establish for themselves when they come to high school, and they see that we have this manufacturing program that that could ultimately lead them to a career opportunity or post-secondary opportunity. And to understand that it's hard, and when it's hard, you got to be a resilient individual. You have to be able to overcome the obstacles that are confronted with you. To be an informed thinker, to think critically, which, again, when you look at some of the work that is done here, work that, when we went and visited Dave Tuttle over at Platt Tech, there was things that this individual, for 23 years in the industry as a teacher, and prior to that, where he worked at Sikorsky, this is more than just putting your hands on a machine and pressing a button and making it work and using a manual mill and grinding it. It's thinking, it's problem-solving. It's understanding how that, you know, that product that you're creating has a specific role in something larger, that's part of something bigger. Again, solving problems, being willing to and finding solutions to the creative things that we're having difficulties with. There's a lot of collaboration that is required in these shops. This is not a single operation where a student is sitting behind a computer and then just goes to a machine and does his work and then moves on to the next one. There's often group projects that are engaging our students. And then, lastly, being a powerful and effective communicator, being willing to show up and voice concerns or ideas, being willing to accept feedback. This is all part of, you know, part of being an effective communicator, listening. So, ultimately, the things that we're talking about in this program and the things that we're looking to accomplish as a school community and as a school in general are where we think this manufacturing program is going to take our school and really provide opportunities for our students that we don't offer at this moment. And it's another avenue, it's something that we're really excited about. I really want to thank Amy and the work that she's done since she got here, and again, everybody who's at the table today for the work that they're doing to make sure that this is something that becomes a reality for our kids and our school community, and ultimately is something that's going to benefit us as we move forward. We would be one of just a few schools in our area, but in the state of Connecticut, that have a program that are not a specialty school like Platt Tech. The Morgan School in Clinton is creating their own manufacturing program now. Lyman Hall in Wallingford, Derby, and Hamden are the most area schools that have programs such as this. We want to retain our students in district. We don't want our students going to Platt Tech. We want them coming here to provide further growth to our school community. So, if we can build programs that set us apart, our hope is that we retain our students in district. So, at this point, I think the next slide, ask if there's anybody has any individual questions for myself or Amy. Mr. Stacy.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, a great idea, and hopefully it comes to fruition and we do it. My only question was, is there any way, or have you thought about incorporating adult ed with this? Are they, can they benefit in some way?
So, we have, by partnering with one of the community colleges, that's one of the avenues we're looking to take, is that we would become possibly a satellite school for the community college that we partner with, and they can offer night classes to adults in the community as well.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
If you're thinking this is doable by the second semester?
Yeah, so, I think part of the conversation we're going to have tonight is the equipment that we need and the lead time that it's going to take to get that equipment here. It's about 19 weeks out or so for much of the equipment. So, 19 weeks from now puts us pretty much to the start of January. Obviously, kids aren't going to be pushing buttons on machines on, you know, day one of semester two. There's a lot of theory that they have to learn first. So, we're confident that if we get the machinery and the equipment ordered, the space is already being retrofitted, that we'll be prepared to put kids in seats in semester two. So, Bob just reminded me, the Platt Tech, the Platt Tech kids, again, they're there all day from 7:00 to 2:00 as part of their program offerings, but they're actually making a piece for one of the NASA space shuttles that's going up. So, they're doing some really amazing work over there, and they partner with Sikorsky. So, again, that partnership, those types of partnerships are what we're looking to create here. Thank you.
Thank you.
On board this evening's finance subcommittee meeting, we'll begin with the finance reviews.
Okay, so, you're going to see purchase orders, there's two purchase orders, two invoices, one's for last fiscal year that we still have open POs for, and open POs over 7,000 for our projects, and then you're going to have current-year purchase orders over 7,000 and invoices in the amount of $331,556.84. Does anybody have any questions with those that were provided? A lot of our larger POs over 7,000 are setting up blanket POs for the current year. Many are for our special education tuition, our transportation for the year, and our special education out-of-district transportation, setting those up for the current school year starting next week. And our largest payment you will see is for $72,200, and that is for our progress payment for the construction taking place in the library to your left and to your right. We are probably 75% done with that progress with the project. The next piece will be installing the glass between the pillars, which will take place once it's ordered. With COVID, everything seems to be back-ordered, so we're hoping for a four to six weeks turnaround for the remainder of that project. Any questions?
Any questions?
Not for me.
The next thing you will see is the health insurance report. The summary states that our income was a little over $1 million, our expense was $239,000. We came to net income for the month of $804,864. I would just like to note of that income, we drew down two months of income of payments for July and August, in July for the summer payments from the town. So, about $400,000 of that is related to August. So, the net income for the month of 8804 is inflated by one month's worth of activity. Questions? Okay, so, moving on to finance discussions, the first on, the topic is the Rotary Tea sponsorship. In the past, the Board of Ed has taken out a tea sponsor of $100. We are looking to pursue that avenue again for $100, and I believe that will, it is for the Great Golf Ball Drop, and we will have a tea sign displayed at that event, if approved, for $100. Yes?
Um, I was about to ask, well, I would answer as supporting the finance board, remember, I'm just going to mention, um, the board usually has halfway through the year, but behind the end, four, and so maybe at this point, um, the board would be inclined to increase the Rotary class through the year.
Because, ooh. Just because this year, they're not doing the Anjanet Awards, and that's, no, because of COVID. So, that's their primary fundraiser for Clothe the Children, which is the, which goes right back to our district, so.
So, they're not planning on doing it in April?
No, this is going to be the primary, this is the primary fundraiser for the Rotary this year, which will fund Clothe the Children.
Then, in light of that, I say that we do an eagle or a birdie sponsorship because a lot of what the Rotary raises a lot of what the Rotary raises comes back to our students in a variety of ways, either through Clothe the Children or the monthly student recognition where students are given scholarships monthly. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and I will miss tasting all those Anjanets.
I know, we're hoping for next year, but you know, just in light of COVID and everything that's happening.
If I could add, both of those sponsors, whatever you guys choose on a dollar amount, come with balls for the drop. I'll just put out there that we will not, we will deny the entries, so no one's winning cash.
So I could tell you that, um, what the animal shelter has done, um, they, the balls that went in, they put in the, um, so it would say like East Haven School District, if that ball did win, the prize did go to a charity of their choice. So that's what they had.
So if our ball comes out, we can put it back to scholarships for our students if we choose.
Absolutely, yeah. So that's what they had asked for, um, like for the animal shelter. They had asked that if the ball that came with their sponsorship won, that that would be put back to a charity of the Rotary's choice or the animal shelter's choice, so.
Awesome. So we can, I think that's up for discussion in regular meeting. We can choose on a price at that point when it's brought forth to a vote.
Thank you.
The next item is wreaths across America. So wreaths across America, I can give you a little background. So I am in a different world. I am the director of East Lawn Cemetery. So I am on the backend of this in coordination of wreaths across America. It is a great event. So East Lawn was selected to be one of the visiting cemeteries for wreaths across America this, to this year. It is a great honor to be selected. East Lawn has willingly given up their cemetery and Green Lawn Cemetery for their veterans. We are, the Lions Club is taking the lead on wreaths across America and they're looking for sponsorships to pay for all of the wreaths that will be laid on all the veterans' graves. In your packet, you will see the corporate sponsorship form. The, the lowest level is the in-sign, which is equal to 10 wreaths for 150. I think that would be my recommendation for the Board of Ed to do, or if you want to go higher, we could go higher, that's, that's your choice. Just to know, we are also going to have East Haven participation in this event. Once we get dates on when wreaths will be delivered, we will be in contact with school bands to make sure our students are there with, with the band and flags and welcoming the tractor trailer when it comes down by, by the green. We want to make sure this is a great town event and we're going to have our students represented properly there. So any donation that you guys find fitting, I am in agreement with.
We're also partnering with them to create opportunities for our students to volunteer as part of this effort in honoring our, our veterans.
As, again, wearing a different hat, as chairman of the East Haven Veterans Council, and just to jump on what RJ said, this is really an honor to have been selected, to have this take place here. Kudos to Wendy Bellmore, who's the honored veteran of the year and the work that she's put into this. And Erica, what you're talking about, they're going to need volunteers. I think the date is December 18th?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so apparently last year at one of the, the places, it snowed and they had no idea what grave, so we need people to go out and mark. I think there's 1,100 veteran graves between the two cemeteries, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it's close to 12.
Yeah. So also, any individual can buy, purchase a wreath and, you know, place it, you can take it outside of East Lawn and, you know, if you have a St. Lawrence or any of the other, if you have a family member, you can do that too and help the cost. But it's a great, it's a great honor for East Haven.
Absolutely. And I think just, um, just trying to get the students into the community and letting us partner with them, I think at minimum we should be a major, as a major sponsor. So when it comes to the discussion portion, I think that's something that we should be doing, especially if we're going to be having our students collaborating and working with the veterans and, you know, displaying the wreaths. I think we should, you know, if we're going to show our, you know, our East Haven pride and stuff, that we should, we should show, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay, any questions with the two donations? No? So moving on is the manufacturing bid requirements. So you all saw the presentation that Ms. Faradi and Mr. Denuzel gave earlier this evening. And what we're looking to do is, the manufacturing program is going to be funded by one of the ESER grants. We set aside this money knowing it was going to enhance our curriculum and better achieve for our student academic growth. With that being said, in these meetings, as they had, as they had noted that many of these machines have a 19, 20-week wait period, some 17-week wait period. And in talking to Platt Tech, in talking to Morgan, in talking with Goodwin, we've all received the same recommendations on our machinery. There is not many manufacturers that you can use for this, for these purchases. There's no advantageous way of getting a cheaper price because they all come back, they all go straight to this Haas manufacturer. So what I'm asking for tonight would be a bid requirement to purchase, a bid waiver, excuse me, to take away the three-week wait period on ordering the machinery. The machinery comes to about 20, um, I'm sorry, the machinery is $282,000 and the tools and supplies to go with that would be another 20,000. So we're roughly looking at $300,000 worth of machinery. We're asking for the bid waiver so we can order that machinery hopefully by the end of this week in order to get it in-house functioning for a second semester. Going out to bid, in my honest opinion, is only going to delay the process, where we're only going to have the same answer. It's going to cost us a bit more money to do the legal documentation to go out to bid. I, I believe Haas is the only, there's only one vendor who can give us these mills made for academic scenarios. So it's on the agenda tonight. If there's any questions, we can go, if you guys have questions, we can go through that now as well.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So is it legal if we do that though?
Correct. So normally, um, normally we don't have to bring grant funding to this level to the board for board approval. Again, you know, since I've been here, we've been doing that. I would like to, I'm just letting you guys know that we could go through the normal process. It will add 10 days of going out to bid in the paper on the site, waiting for the next meeting, and it will probably delay the, the ordering of those machines enough to possibly put the start time in jeopardy.
Are you saying there's just one vendor that provides them for schools?
There is one vendor, Haas, that everybody uses in the state. Gateway, Husatonic, Goodwin, Platt Tech and Milford, the Morgan School who's starting this program, Hamden who's using this program have all gone with Haas because Haas is what most manufacturers use upon graduation. So when students are in the local manufacturing community, most of these machines are Haas machines. And we feel it's best to give them a machine that they're using in school. So when they graduate, they're going to be using a machine that they're familiar with and we can provide that experience for them here.
Okay.
And these are ESER, it's grant, so we don't have to.
Yeah, correct. All right. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
And to add more to that, there's also a chip shortage. So the Haas representative told us that they're only, they're only making X amount of machines or mills per month. And once they meet the threshold for the number of chips that they have, you're getting put to the back burner, which could be two years. So we want to get to the front of the list as soon as possible so we can take advantage of this program.
As long as it's legal, yeah.
So.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so the last piece is the All-American Contract Addendum under Finance Discussions. What we are looking for this evening on your agenda is to vote on continuing the sanitation attendance at our elementary schools, middle school and high school. Last year with COVID, we had two sanitation attendants per school for the whole academic day. This year, we are only looking to have one sanitation attendant at the school for five hours between the hours of 10:00 and 3:00, which is primarily the lunchtimes to, to walk around and clean the high-contact areas around lunch and also give the janitors a chance to keep up with the cleaning of the building and not be bogged down by the extra high-surface area clean.
And Arda, just to ask, this is in alignment with both the Health Department and state's recommendations?
Correct.
Yes, so DPH and CSDE has, they've advised that the daily standard routine cleaning is sufficient in schools when done well in alignment with your standard, daily standard cleaning procedures and additional cleaning of surfaces like cafeteria tables and bathrooms and desks throughout the day when students are in the building.
So you're adding that one extra layer then?
During the school day when students are in the building. Yep.
That's good.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. It's an allowable expense through the American Rescue Fund grant.
And I read that this is, can be suspended should things get better and whatever.
Correct.
So there's no like, it's not like a permanent for one year or anything like that, it can be stopped at any time. Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's a good question. That's positive. Let's hope so, right? Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed is right. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, so lastly, on the building and grounds updates, I just wanted to provide everybody, just on an update of what we've been going through over the summer for the buildings and getting everything ready and projects going on as we start on a new school year. So we've had all our carpets replaced with the VCT tiles at Deer Run School. Every classroom has been completed at Deer Run and every classroom has been completed at JMMs. We have also done individual carpet replacements in classrooms to the VCT tiles. We've done two at Mamawgin and we've done four at Tuttle School. In addition, we have ordered stair treads to replace faulty stair treads at Mamawgin School. We have ordered boilers to be replaced at East Haven Academy, Deer Run and Ferrara. Due to COVID, they are backordered and will not be received until early, early fall and we will gauge the replacement of those based on the timing of the year and the weather. If it's going to be cold, we will hold off until the spring, but those have been ordered. The portable classroom roof at, for our school has been replaced. We have paved a new, we have created a new parking lot in the back of Deer Run School. This will house 25 to 30 spaces for our staff parking and hopefully will take care of the problem on Route 80 in, in the morning with staff and parents and buses trying to get through that morning loop. I believe they, we've added the spaces, we've resurfaced the play area in, in the back for the kids and we have also created some sidewalks with pavement around the building. So there is now a full walking circle, which is handicap, handicap accessible around the whole perimeter of Deer Run. They are lining that lot today, so they should be ready for T-teachers when they come in on Thursday. We have done HVAC upgrades at JMMs and the East Haven Academy. We have replaced the old blower motors in every classroom. I believe half of them are done, the other half will be done after hours once school begins. At East Haven Academy, we have replaced or installed ductless units in the multipurpose room that is used for the cafeteria and their gym, gymnasium. We put two six-ton units in there that produce air conditioning in the summer and provide some heat in the winter to alleviate the students for the hot and cold that they use for gym and the cafeteria. At Tuttle School, we also installed a multi-split unit in their all-per-purpose room, which is the gym and cafeteria. That unit is rather large and also backordered, so that will take place probably closer to the spring timeframe. So that takes care of the HVAC upgrades in the academic space. For food service upgrades, we have replaced older coolers, walk-ins. We have received new shelving and racking almost at all schools. There will be new menu signage at all schools included. There will be, I believe, 46-inch TVs replaced at all schools and will be manned up by the high school and that will include posting the menus and any school announcements to the cafeteria for the students. We have purchased a pizza oven at the high school, which should be installed and completely functional within the next month or so. We are in the process of getting state approval for a district food truck as we spoke of. Just going through the final boxes to check off, but we should get that approval within the next month and go forward with the purchase of that. We have replaced the kitchen floor at the East Haven Academy in their kitchen space. And we have also added air conditioning that was not working for some time in the kitchen at Tuttle School. We put another six-ton air unit in there for heat and air conditioning as well, so that'll be properly climate-controlled as well. We restructured our library, which you can see to your left and to your right. We have some office space here and we brought up some our, our Mac Lab and that is all to facilitate our CTE and manufacturing program that you saw the presentation on sooner. Everything that was housed down in our basement will get moved, moved up here. We are waiting on glass between the pillars, which has been ordered, and hopefully will be in here in the next couple of months. We have made progress on the Tuttle School playground. There is a, a shortage for that as well. We have a meeting on Friday to talk about that, but we're expecting delivery, I think, on September 17th.
That, that's correct.
So September 17th, we will get all the playground delivered to Tuttle School and hopefully, once that's done, the installer knows there's a push with school in session. We're hoping to get use of it before it gets too cold for the students. We have approved sidewalk improvements at JMMs to continue the, the new sidewalk around the back of the building to the front of the building. The high school, there are some faulty sidewalk and handicap ramps, which we will replace. Overbrook will get a new sidewalk in Mamawgin's compass and small circular area by their habitat, which has been destroyed through salt and their snow blowers, will be replaced. Our contractor is working at the Town Green, so he is pretty busy there. So once he is set there, he will begin working at our, at our schools. We have replaced the wall pads in the gym for safety for our students at Mamawgin, Overbrook and Tuttle School. All of those should be installed in the next two weeks due to some backorders with supplies. We have East Haven at the high school, the visitor bleachers and the cement pad below the bleachers to ensure there's increased strength for any storm like we had in the past, which blew them away the first time. Those have been ordered. Again, there's a steel shortage, so that, that will take place. Installation has, I made sure we had a guarantee installation before our Thanksgiving game in November, so they are guaranteeing first week in November. So I will stick to them on that. In addition, we have, Total Fence will be placing a fence at our high school from the track all the way to Deer Run for security issues. We have many people who like to ride their dirt bikes and bring their dogs in the field and do some damage and leave and pretty costly expenses. So we're going to be placing a fence from the high school track down to Deer Run and it's going to be locked off until the public. Our coaches will have access and our, all our teams will have the same access. It'll just be blocked off to the pub, public on off-hours. What else? And then normal, the normal stuff for general maintenance, we have painting, plumbing, HVAC that's been done. Our floors have all been waxed and are ready to go. Landscaping has been upgraded. Eric and I had done some walkthroughs yesterday and we're going to do the rest tomorrow and our school's looking tip-top shape, ready to go for the next school year. That was a lot, sorry.
Huge, huge testament to RJ and his leadership, as well as Vene Conseglio and his crew and Lance at All-American and his crew. They work really well together and as you heard, they've accomplished an incredible amount of
Busy summer.
(laugh) New and replacement and repair maintenance. So thank you for that overview, RJ.
RJ, the fencing has also been completed at Deer Run.
Deer Run, correct.
There's two, and privacy screen.
So there is like a three-section piece of fencing that was not completed at Deer Run when the, when the playground was installed due to some stumps in the, in the way.
Oh, yeah.
The town has since removed those stumps. That fencing has been installed. We're putting this privacy screen up. Hopefully, it's up today, so we are completely done. The neighbors are now happy.
Good. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Great job, RJ.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn the Finance Subcommittee meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Also order this evening's meeting and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So at this time, Melissa, roll call attendance. And if you could let me know, are any members joining virtually this evening?
No.
Okay, so then we do not need to do a roll call vote this evening. We can't do an I-vote on certain items. So go ahead and do a roll call attendance, please.
Tia DePalma?
Here.
Jennifer Delongo?
Here.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio? Tom Hennessy? Tom Murtaugh? Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Here.
Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stacy?
Here.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Here.
Okay. So as for my report this evening, I just want to remind the board members about convocation on Monday, if you can make it.
Can we get the time for that? I'm sorry.
Eight-thirty? Erica, convocation eight-thirty on Monday?
Convocation begins at eight-thirty. You're welcome to join us in the foyer between 7:40 and 8:20 for some coffee and conversation.
And since our last meeting, we have had some guidance from the state, so there will be a mask policy in place till at least September 30th in this school buildings. And I'd also like to take, take a moment to acknowledge and thank board member, Mary Ann Pellegrino for her years of service on the board. Mary Ann, you will be missed. Unfortunately, Mary Ann will be resigning. Mary Ann, you will be missed. Unfortunately, Mary Ann will be resigning due to moving to a neighboring town.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Definitely going to be missed.
Very much.
A little raise, sunshine. Okay, so at this time, correspondence. Do we have any new correspondence?
There was one loaded to the drive.
Just, and that's nothing new?
Just one.
Okay, just the one correspondence that everyone can view on the drive. At this time, I'll ask for subcommittee reports. Personnel?
Okay, so we do have some contracts coming up.
Got it. Mike, can't hear you.
Okay, I think it's on. Hello?
Yep.
So we have some contracts to approve, some hires and rehires and resignations and we're looking to get back into negotiations with the custodians. There was a problem, but we'll soon be back. Not with negotiations, personal problems with someone.
Scheduling.
Scheduling, yes. Thank you.
And I will ask for policy?
Nothing for policy just yet and community outreach. I don't believe there's anything, but tonight we will see a few things coming for Wreaths Across America and some collaboration with the Rotary Club, so.
Two excellent opportunities for the district.
Absolutely.
Jack, athletics?
Yes, happy to announce that all coaching positions are filled. You'll notice tonight, glad to announce that Mr. Rick Norachi has, will be up for cross-country, both boys and girls. It's a mixed group. All the coaches have met with Mr. Bertaram, the athletic director. They all understand what policies are to be followed. They're doing pre-checks at practices, checking on temperatures to make sure for COVID and they're following the state regulations. I think that, oh, sad note, and I've got to investigate this further. It appears that the Yellow Jacket Club is disbanding. So we'll have to find out what that's about and if there's some way to put together another parent group, but we'll look into that.
That's unfortunate.
I believe they do have information on that, correct?
Yes.
You want to share?
So in January, we received a letter from the state notifying us that the Yellow Jacket Club had failed to file proper paperwork with the Secretary of State and that it was no longer recognized as an entity by the state of Connecticut. But I believe before me coming on board, the process had been started to transfer the funds from the Yellow Jacket Club due to not being an entity over to the Student Activity Funds at the Finance Department where it would follow. Each team would have their own individual account and follow the same rules of purchase orders and purchasing policies as the Board of Ed would. I believe Mr. Denozon's team would like to start another booster club just under the sanctions of the East Haven Board of Ed, of East Haven Board of Ed, following the rules of the fiscal policies here.
Thank you.
We can talk further if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I don't believe there's any other updates. So I will ask for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are really excited to welcome our staff back on Thursday. They'll engage in three-day, two days of PD and then participate in convocation on Monday. And we are also super excited to welcome our students back on Tuesday and doing some walkthroughs with RJ and Vinnie and our principals through the, through the schools. We are ready and very excited for what we think is going to be a great school year. Our theme this year is skillfully sailing into 2021, 2022. We learned an incredible amount last year as we navigated the challenging pandemic waters and we're going to use all of that knowledge to make sure we have a combination of mitigation strategies that keep our staff and our students healthy and safe while ensuring that we can continue in-person learning. I know Jennifer will have some more in her report to share as we think about some of the strategies for this upcoming year. But certainly, I feel like we're very well poised to have a very successful year and all of the things we learned last year will set the stage for us to continue to provide our students and staff with the best possible environments to educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent?
Hi, everybody. How are you today?
Doing well, Jen.
First and foremost, I wanted to sort of reiterate the message that our theme this year is skillfully sailing into 21, 22. And like many sailors, I promise I won't beat the metaphor to death, but like many sailors, we find that the winds change frequently. We have to adjust our sails and this is our theme this year because it's what teachers have done all last year. They've made a lot of extensive efforts to get their students onboard, so to speak, as well as have our families. Families have to constantly adjust to expectations and requirements and mandates and whether their children are old enough to be vaccinated or not. Families have a lot on their minds. And so what we're doing right now, and I'm, I'm here to report to you, is, is some of the thinking behind our planning for this year. A lot of families are wondering about what we're planning with regard to continuation of learning if students are required to quarantine. And so I just want to reiterate that the best source of information is our district website and some of the information that goes out. If you're receiving information, you should be, my hope is that you're able to point to it in writing somewhere on the district, you know, website. If that is not the case, it, it's worth checking in with us and letting us know because we want to make sure we have good information out there. So we're just asking the board and the community to sort of rely on our social media, our district website, our teaching and learning and website, our district newsletter, where you can find the information. Sometimes we have, social media is a really great community, but please reach out if you have a question. Is this true is a, is a great question, so we'd like to answer that. But I want to sort of let you know that our existing curricular program in all content areas will allow us to be flexible. It involves both print-based learning materials such as math, handwriting and phonics print books for kids at the elementary level especially and even at the upper levels. We do have text-based resources. And our digital platforms also have video lessons and review, reviews that can be assigned to students through our Google Classroom, which integrates with our Savis platform, our world language learning platforms and many of our other textbook platforms. So, but those are things that are, you know, in the hands of our skilled teachers who are designing lessons for students. And so we want to really have families be having success at home. So we've talked to families. Julie Church facilitated over 15 hours of family forums and, and, and the things that we sort of have at the back of our minds is we want to make sure that we have equal access for students experiencing at-home learning if they are in quarantine, for families who have, are in a daycare setting, are at home with a stay-at-home family, who may be with a grandparent with limited tech capacity. We want to have options that allow for all of those families to receive, you know, high-quality learning material and instruction that will provide for them to move forward with their success. We want to ensure that when students are placed in quarantine, they are continuing to engage in the meaningful learning that connects and builds upon what they're going to need to know when they return to the classroom and that's connected to our curricular program and not sort of separate and distinct. We want assignments to be meaningful and not just simply low-level skill and drill, although there may be some practice that's required in a day-to-day basis with math, facts, handwriting. We do also want students to have, you know, the comprehensive, regular educational experience that links to what they're learning. We also want to consider the design of a learning model that best meets the context where the student is learning. So in terms of the model that we used last year, we did offer live-streamed classes for students and that was a very challenging thing and I can speak as, as a parent. In some cases, it works really well if you have students that can talk to other students and do peer-to-peer conversations, but it can also be very disruptive and also accessibility can be an issue for students with hearing issues if they're having to watch students who are talking through masks. It isn't designed, so if you've ever taught in a hybrid classroom, for those of you that are worked at the college level in an online class, it's, it's very important for learning experience to be intentionally designed for the context. So we want our students not to feel like they're, they're, they're a part of the class kind of in the back, but really like the learning that they're doing is moving forward. So we are engaging in this planning with our teachers and students to develop a plan at the elementary level that creates a success-at-home plan that allows students to engage in regular and predictable activities that are based on what they're doing in class, that are connected to what they're doing in class or their teacher's Google Classroom, as well as utilizes our existing curricular resources, like their math book and the instructional videos that come along with their teacher's Google Classroom or their learning experience. We also have the option for some concept coaching and virtual tutoring that we're exploring today. So we may be proposing a success-at-home coordinator in future meetings, just to kind of bring that to your attention so that there is a live person that our kids can connect to at home. That design is so that like I'm with a group of students that I know is at home and I'm not trying to do sort of, you know, we want our teachers to connect with their students. Their teacher will still be connecting with students, but they may not be sort of watching in the corner while there's something else going on over here. So we wanted that design to be like, hi, in the Zoom, I'm, I'm here with you because that, you know, it's just an intentional piece. So I'm, I'm speaking about a lot of ideas that are sometimes more easy when they're concrete. So I am, you know, happy to put something together in more detail if a curriculum workshop is requested, but I wanted to just sort of get out some of the thinking to alleviate some of the questions and making sure that we're all on the same page with the right information.
Jen?
Yes.
Is there no option then to, especially for middle school, high school classes, to use that streaming option that we did in last year?
So again, everything has a pro and a con, but if you, if you think about, you know, and I, and I don't have a definitive answer for you. Is there an option? Is there not an option? I can tell you the pros and the cons. I spoke with a lot of kids who were in these live-streamed classes. Some, I had, I had a kid who was experiencing class, you know, remotely. I think many parents would tell you that they liked the ability to know that their child, you know, was receiving instruction, but a lot of kids found it hard to follow, hard to hear. It's a, from a design perspective, it's not designed to create a robust learning experience when you're teaching people both in, I, it's even challenging to facilitate a meeting. You also have an extra barrier of the teacher being required to like let students in on a regular basis or the meeting link isn't working and the office is being called. So there can be a disruption in terms of amount of time spent navigating the live-stream platform.
Is there an option for like a para to run that feature?
So, um, again, it's, these are, these are conversations, right, that the board should have because if the para is running that feature, the para's job, you know, current position is to support and shoulder partner with students that are there. And that could be on Zoom with a kid who is on that para's caseload, but you know, it's, it's a give and take. So the pros of live-stream is that you get to see what's happening in the class. But if I, I would commit to whatever we choose, the pro that we're looking for is students gain meaningful learning of the material. And I don't know necessarily that I have data that supports students experiencing live-streamed classes led to better understanding of the material that was presented in those classes. I find a virtual tutoring where I've been provided with the understanding of what is my topic in my math class today. I'm able to watch and stop and pause the instructional video and then I can meet with a tutor at a different time and talk one-on-one about the questions that I have in real time and not like wait for her to see my little hand up on the screen. May be worth us looking into. So again, I'm not here to say definitively that Jen makes the decision. Like our families and our communities and our teachers and our administrators really have put a lot of thought into these conversations. But if live, you know, if live streaming is something that we decide to do, from a design perspective, the capacity that it takes to run it, to have the teacher stop, you know, there's, there's an instructional time loss when you're waiting for all the kids to join the meet, when someone's late, when you have to stop what you're doing to go let someone in or someone gets kicked out. Those kids who got kicked out deserve to be in, if that's our model, but we did find that that to be the case at home. So, you know, I say, not to be vague, but to say like we really struggle with these kinds of questions. But we want the answer to always be what's going to get our kids moving forward academically. What is the best design of learning to ensure a student leaves my class with a better understanding of the causes of the American Revolution? Not like just what my face looks like, right? So, so what would be, our goal as a board, I'm, I'm very much interested to hear about that. And again, those three things are equal access to students regardless of, you know, their setting and their context at home to be able to engage in meaningful work that moves their academics forward. And we have the capacity. We have learning tools, instructional video, screencastify. We have many tools that can help our teachers. We have many, you know, core and supplemental curricular resources that make it reasonably seamless to understand what a kid is getting and then assign them some resources that help them meet that gap. So we want to ensure those resources and that time and that capacity goes into like focusing feedback on student learning and not like fixing troubleshooting tech issues with the I-V. Like, which may be our decision and I defer to the board of the team, but I want to just keep that in mind.
And I, I also think we have to think about the new sort of guidance and regulations that were put out. Most districts across the state are not offering the remote option. And with the CDC making exceptions relative to the distancing in classrooms, so three feet instead of six feet, I think that we're going to see a lot fewer kids in, placed in quarantine from, from the school's perspective. And in, in addition to that, the guidance has been, you know, you're not quarantining an entire class. You're really just quarantining any individual who may be considered a close contact. And that definition now is less than three feet for more than 15 minutes in the classroom setting. So.
Quarantining if you're vaccinated.
And you do not have to quarantine if you're vaccinated. And in touring all the schools with RJ and looking at the setups and the structures in all these, these classrooms, we, RJ actually had a meter, I mean, a yardstick with him. And we walked into classrooms and there is sufficient space to maintain that three feet. So even if, you know, you're, you're more, three feet or more from the people next to you and I'm in the middle and I test positive, the two individuals on each side of me will not need to quarantine. So while it's hard to predict and I, you know, I don't have a, a crystal ball or a magic globe, I do think that we are going to have a lot less kids in quarantine this year than we have in the past.
We will still be posting our COVID tracker, correct?
Yes, correct. Melissa has been gracious enough to update that tracker. We will be providing information on a daily basis relative to positive cases and the number of students that the district places in quarantine. We have a meeting, Bob and I, with our school nurses on Friday. We do have our LPNs returning to our buildings and I know probably everybody just saw Executive Order 13D, which requires all staff members to be vaccinated or at least have one of the two vaccine shots prior to September 27th. I, I do know that there's some confusing language and competing thoughts on that executive order and I am anticipating some additional guidance relative to our responsibility as a district in collecting that information and reporting that information in the next 24 to 48 hours. And also the state is revising two key addendums, Addendum Number Nine and Eleven and Five might be in there as well that we are anxiously awaiting, that will have additional guidance relative to quarantining and isolation and some other thoughts. But we are well-equipped to start the school year. We have our tracker. We have our processes and protocols. We have our tracker, we have our processes and protocols. And our classrooms are looking really great in terms of maintaining that three-foot distancing.
I just want to continue to remind.
You're on. Remind families to reach out if they have specific look fours, things that worked really well last year, that they found helpful. But we want to really make sure we're using the right evidence to put a plan in place that's designed to first and foremost promote learning. Not just access to teachers, you know, in the classrooms, but like what is going to make our, you know, when we design curriculum, that's what we do. I worked with a wonderful group of teachers today, and we're planning three days of awesome professional learning, really being thoughtful about the design, from everything from the activity that you have kids or teachers or adults do, to, you know, what kinds of questions are you putting in the chat? And what, I mean, all of, whether it's virtual or online, we want to really design it in such a way that like has everybody uncovering their learning all the way through, and so we really want that for kids. I know there's many families that are worried about the pandemic and, you know, there's, it is, you know, it's a separate conversation. This is regarding quarantine instruction for students placed in quarantine. But, you know, if there's particular things that, that you've heard that you're wondering if are correct, please reach out and just let me know.
I think that's really important that they do that, because there are things out there that I think there's some confusion. But I have to, I also think that given the monies and the things that you appropriate for anything that we're going to add or not add, it's important to remember, you can't prepare like for as many, it takes a long time to put all of that into play. And like you said, the pros and cons, it's awfully hard to tell how much real learning will go on for the children in front of you and the children that are at home if you have all that live streaming. It's not, yeah.
I think, you know, I don't know, I think it's important to know that we, you know, still believe that the model for instruction that really leads to the best learning outcomes for kids is students being in person. And then, you know, we also have a curricular program that can, you know, allow for students in quarantine to continue with those skills and be provided with some virtual tutoring or virtual check-ins that will still allow them a touch point. And honestly, we found in our extended day program that that touch point one-on-one or three-on-one might have led to deeper understanding of a math content than watching the lesson on the board. You know, we do have.
Less stress, too.
Yeah, we do have access to a lot of things. And so again, it's just separating the conversation, you know, whether or not, you know, I think RJ and Erica and the principals have done a really wonderful job keeping our students safe and keeping our environment safe for kids to learn. I know, you know, everybody's personal health matters notwithstanding, you know, we, I think they've done a wonderful job. But we want to make sure that all of our kids, you know, of all abilities, of all learning diversities, are able to move forward and feel very successful in school. And we want parents to have the capacity to help and implement any supports that we can provide for them. So I very much value, I've had a lot of conversations with parents on the phone. I value those conversations. We incorporate those pieces of feedback into our planning. And I just want to reiterate that the community's been very helpful and supportive. And, you know, we are really working hard to get it with a wonderful team of teachers to get it right. And so it may look like, you know, our success at home program might look like a blended model more than, you know, a live, it wouldn't be like the livestream model you were used to last year. But we can, we can talk more about that in a more extended session if that is, if the board is so inclined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move on to the approval of meeting minutes for our regular meeting on July 27, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 27, 2021.
Second.
Any questions? If not, I'm going to ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve the consent agenda? I mean, the approve the meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now we are on approval of the consent agenda, which includes purchase orders over 7,000 for the year 2021-2022, invoices for fiscal year 2020-2021 in the amount of $73,728.27, and invoices for fiscal year 21-22 in the amount of $331,556.84. Are those numbers still correct?
Those numbers are still correct.
Can you read that 73,000 again? I have a written.
Sure, 73,728.27. $28.27.
Must have been my dyslexia, I had 82.
No, I mean, my prescription changed since these glasses were just on my old back.
Thank you.
I could have had that wrong. All right, so, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the purchase orders over 7,000 for 21-22 invoices and for the fiscal year 2021 and for 21-22. Do I need to state the exact numbers again? I will.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for an I vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
One abstention, Mary Ann. Noted, motion carries. So that brings us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening. I'm going to first ask if there's anyone here present this evening that would like to speak. All right, Melissa, do we have any call-in viewers?
So I just want to make, just make it clear that for the next meeting, just in case anyone who's watching this back is confused, I will allow you into the actual Zoom once it's your turn to speak. So we had a couple people in the waiting room, and I see that they've now left, so I'm not sure if they thought that I would admit them at that time.
Is that on the agenda?
It is, yes.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure that that is written somewhere.
I just wanted to clarify, just in case. So I have one person, Megan.
And if you could just remind Megan to introduce herself and address, thanks.
Megan, you are now able to speak. Let me just put this. I'm not sure if she can hear. Megan, you're in the room now. I can't see your microphone, though. Okay, I'll move on to the next person. I had one person and they left. No, we had one other person and they just left. Did you want to wait a second or no?
I did want to ensure that the public had access tonight, but no.
I think there's a learning curve to this, because it can be so confusing.
It is.
So if maybe, I don't know if they're, can they hear you if you're talking? I mean, are they, you don't know?
There's no one waiting anymore. Megan was in.
I don't mean it's so easy to do, it's so easy to get knocked out, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so I admitted her to the room, then put her back in the waiting room, and now there's nobody, so.
Okay. Maybe, you know, going forward, if we do the reminder for the board meetings, mention that they can also participate remotely with a call-in Zoom option, just to try to encourage more participation with the community.
So on the agenda, yeah, on the agenda, you know, it says, meetings are open to the public in person. However, if you'd like to make a comment via Zoom, you may click the link below, and the link's included, and the Zoom meeting room will be open at 7:00 on the night of the meeting. You'll be placed in a waiting room until the audience of the citizens portion of the meeting begins and it's your turn to speak. And so Melissa moves them from the waiting room into the regular room where they can make their comment, and then back to the waiting room and would go get the next person therefore, just like someone would be taking turns at the podium.
Right. So I still have Megan in, but I'm not able to hear her.
Can you, is it, is it on the computer? Can you turn up the computer volume?
There's no. She just doesn't have a microphone connected. Megan, I don't know if you can hear me, but if you're wanting to speak. There's no chat on a, on that Zoom, yeah, that Zoom feature.
Sure, you just need to go to the podium and put your name and address down.
Okay. Hi, my name is Bill Duff Francis. In the, in your, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, in your opening statement, you said something.
I'm sorry, could you just state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sylvan Hills, I live on 96 Sylvan Hills Road, East Haven. One of the things you mentioned in your statement was in regards to the quarantine, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I misunderstood what you said earlier, but it seems to me that there's no clear plan at this moment for, you know, whether or not a kid needs to be quarantined and be at home for a certain period of time if they come in this, you know, contact with someone who has COVID. Is that, is that, did I get that correctly? That there's no clear-cut plan at the moment in terms of quarantining and have a way of, you know, the kids still being a part, you know, being able to participate in some type of unlearning while they're quarantining? Did I?
So right now, if the district places your child in quarantine, Jennifer has organized a combination of personalized, and correct me if I'm wrong, personalized learning software, access to their textbooks and their math books, as well as touch points with a tutor. Kids who are placed in quarantine could be out for a matter of three to eight days. So depending on when you get put into quarantine, the circumstances of your quarantine, there's a variation in terms of timeline there. And during that time, students are allowed to get credit as well as be marked present for the day if they're completing the tasks and the combination of work that Jennifer was speaking about in her presentation.
So they'll be.
We're asking for additional, or we're proposing some additional things that are still in the works in terms of virtual support for teachers to be able to do connecting and mentoring with students who are at home. So there are some components of the plan that we're looking to add and enhance our current success.
As needed, though, right? Because if you get, you know, the chances of many people probably being quarantined might be different this year. So I see why you're hesitating. Is that why, you know?
Well, we just have to post for a position. I mean, that requires, you know.
Yeah, that's why I remind everyone that it's Audience of Citizens.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, too.
Yes, thank you.
But it's possible that multiple kids could be in quarantine, isn't it not?
Yes.
So aren't we, shouldn't we be prepared for the worst? And to ensure that our kids continue to feel like they're a part of the learning community, you know, the classroom, so to speak, and have some type of connection with their teacher?
Yeah, and I, it sounds like you have a lot of thoughts on this. So and I know typically in our Audience of Citizens, we make our comments, but I recommend if you'd like to chat after the meeting, please let me know.
Okay.
Board, can you just reiterate that, the parameters around public comment, so that he?
Yes, the public is, you know, invited to speak to, on any item that is under the board's jurisdiction. However, there usually is not any type of conversation or discussion pertaining to such unless it's to clarify false information.
I apologize. I got roped into.
Thank you.
I do, apologize.
Because we want to engage in conversation, and we want to explain and help, and we also want to hear perspectives from parents.
It's just a policy.
It just makes it difficult for us when we're sitting here.
But if you think about it, it was clarification.
Yeah, no, it is.
Because there is a plan, but like you said, you need to follow.
We took you to add, you know, different pieces of the puzzle.
So should I try one more time?
Sure.
Okay.
See if we get Megan back.
I'm on. So we're about to wrap up the Audience of Citizens. I just wanted to give you one more chance, Megan, if you were able to come on.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. And let's move on to. 7.1. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the bilingual parent educator personal contract as discussed earlier this evening. At this point, since it was discussed, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the bilingual parent educator personal contract.
Second. Sorry.
Let's have one. All right, Jen and Tia.
Right together, too.
I am going to ask if there's any questions or comments now that we do have a motion on the floor. If not, I'm going to ask for an I vote. To, all in favor to approve the appointment of the bilingual parent educators, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One abstention, Mary Ann, motion carries. 7.2, discussion and possible action on the approval of the preschool teacher personal contracts as discussed in subcommittee. So at this time, I am just going to ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the preschool teacher personal contracts.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the contracts as discussed earlier? Okay, if not, I am going to ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve the preschool teacher personal contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One abstention from Ms. Palgrino.
I want to clarify that it's not that I disagree with anything, it's that I'm unclear as to my legal status.
Are you still living in town?
Yes, but I'm registered to vote in Woodbridge.
But I don't think that, you're still living here, right?
Yeah, well, all right.
But you're trying to, yeah. Thank you for that, though.
Yes, thank you for making it a little bit easier on us.
So happy that she's here, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion and possible action on the approval of East Haven Administrator Supervisors MOU as discussed in subcommittee.
I make a motion to approve the East Haven Administrators and Supervisors, Emilia.
Second.
All right, so at this time, as you know, this was discussed in executive session. So I will ask now that the motion is on the floor, if there's any questions or comments in regard to the MOU.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that I originally made a statement as being opposed. But at this time, I've had an opportunity to produce it, and so when we do make the vote, I make it know that why I'm making a change.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Nope, all right, so I'm going to go ahead and ask, all in favor to approve the East Haven Administrators and Supervisors MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One abstention, one, is it opposition or opposed?
Opposition.
It's the same thing as opposed.
Yeah, I didn't know there was a technical, more technical term. All right. This brings us to 7.4, discussion and possible action on the approval of the East Haven Administrators and Supervisors Association contract. And just for, you know, transparency reasons, as you know, I send everybody an email because their, the information was not loaded till Monday, and that's because that was the.
Board attorney?
The board attorney getting information, and as our policy states, that all meeting materials will be made available as soon as possible, which on Monday, late at late morning is when it became possible, finalized by the attorneys. So hopefully everyone had a chance to review. And so at this time, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the East Haven Administrators and Supervisor Association. I make a motion to approve the East Haven administrators and supervisor association contract.
I second that.
Any questions or comments?
The only comment I would make is I think it's imperative that this gets done as quickly as possible, and it is most beneficial to the education process and to the students of East Haven.
Thank you, Jack.
I agree, Jack.
Any other? No? If not, at this time for seven point four, I will ask for an I vote on the approval of the East Haven administrators and supervisors association contract. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Two abstentions? From Ms. De Longo and Ms. Pellegrino? That brings, motion carries, that brings us to seven point five, discussion and possible action on the approval of the Rotary Tea sponsorship as discussed in subcommittee, and either Erica, I'm sure, can tell us a little bit more about that, if they'd like, if any, or if anybody has any questions, if not, since it was, uh, earlier discussed, I'm open to someone making a motion.
I would make the recommendation that the board engages as an Eagle sponsor for the East Haven Rotary, um...
So that increases the?
Golf ball drop.
In the amount of $500.
So I make a motion to approve the Rotary Tea sponsorship in the amount of $500. Eagle what?
Eagle sponsor.
Eagle sponsor, okay.
Jen, second.
So at this time, I'm going to ask for any questions or comments? All right, if not, I'm going to ask for an I vote, all in favor to approve the $500 Rotary Tea sponsorship, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
I'm going to abstain as a Rotary member.
Two abstentions? That brings us to discussion and possible action on the approval of the Reefs Across America donation, which, as we discussed in subcommittee, is really an honor for the community, am I correct with that, Jack?
Yep, very much so.
Yep, yep. There you heard it. Uh, so at this time, does, would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I have a recommendation, I'm, I mean, as long as the majority, I, I mean, I recommend as, um, as a corporate sponsor, at minimum, we would be a major, if, if we're going to participate as a, as a district, I would say at minimum. Oh, I thought we were, oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve Reefs Across America donation.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the donation?
I make a motion, I mean, make a recommendation, to be at minimum, um, up a major, which is $600. If anyone would like to?
Questions, comments?
We have that funding, right?
All, all in favor to approve the Reefs Across America donation as, what is it?
Major.
As major sponsors.
Corporate, major corporate sponsors.
Say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
I'm going to abstain from that one.
Okay, we have Mr. Stacy and Mrs. Pellegrino abstaining, which brings us to discussion and possible action on the approval of the candidate for the finance manager position as discussed in subcommittee. And this would be to fill, um, I know it's a new title, but it's really to fill Ms. Bavera's job, who is no longer with the district. Did anyone have any clarification questions before I ask for a motion?
No.
It's not that I will ask for a motion at this time.
I make a motion to approve the finance manager's position.
I'll second.
Well, approve the candidate.
Approve the candidate, do I need to state his name?
His name is Joe Rossi, if you'd like to add it.
To approve Joe Rossi.
To approve Joe Rossi.
There you go.
Do you have a second?
Richard.
I have a second.
Jen?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, any questions or comments? If not, I'm going to ask for an I vote to approve Joe Rossi as our new finance manager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Ms. Pellegrino abstains, motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Rossi, in case you do this, okay, all right. Seven point eight, discussion and possible action on the approval of the All-American Contract Addendum, as noted in subcommittee, this is to extend our sanitation workers at each school, I believe we're going to move ahead with just one, right? At each school between the hours of 10:00 and 3:00, am I correct? And this is grant-funded, so even though it does, I guess the contract does need to be, yeah, approved, just not, yeah. Okay, so any clarification questions, if not, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the All-American Contract Addendum.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'm going to ask for an all-in-favor vote of aye, all in favor to approve All-American Contract Addendum, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Ms. Pellegrino? Motion carries. That brings us to seven point nine, discussion and possible action on the hires, rehires, and stipends, um, as loaded to the drive and discussed earlier, is there any clarification questions, otherwise I'm going to ask for a motion.
I have a clarification question.
I do too.
On, um, band advisor, A, it's split.
Same.
Individual listed, I thought resigned.
Correct.
He completed the summer band camp in time for us to be able to start, so the students could have experience this summer while we found a replacement, so that was prorated for the portion of time when he worked this summer.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarification, um, the new hire for band has taken on the role as the, um, the marching band?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay.
So effective, this, the start date, that, that stipend is prorated for the duration of the year, when he will continue to work with the marching band, um, and we're very excited, he's a very talented individual.
Is that who's practicing, who's practicing this evening?
Oh, wow, awesome. Was the band happy, and, because I know our last meeting, you know, we spoke and, you know, we told them, you know, we were confident we were going to find a great candidate.
Still, um...
Any change is always challenging, but I think he'll serve the community well.
I, um, also had a question, um... For the, I know the high school basketball coach is not listed, however, for the, um, J M S cross-country, I know that the actual sports don't overlap, training purposes, those don't overlap for two head coach positions?
Can you ask your question again?
So, our head coach?
For?
High school basketball.
Girls' basketball.
Girls' basketball.
Yep.
And then J M S cross-country, now head coach?
Are one in the same.
Are going to be the same.
Two different seasons.
Two different seasons.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, it's going to be, there's no, that's what I'm asking, there's no training overlap?
No, the middle school is typically a shorter season than the high school.
Okay, that was my question, the training overlap.
Gotcha.
One question about the, the band, is it still co-op?
Is it still a co-op?
It is, it is.
Oh, good, so it worked out for the question.
Yep.
Even though, okay, good.
All my question.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion.
A motion to approve, um, hires, rehires, and stipends.
Second.
Um, at this time, um...
Comment?
If there's any questions or comments?
Comment?
Comment?
Uh, for the purpose of disclosure, I'd like to make note that I have a family member on the stipend list, um, I was advised that this individual was the sole applicant, and so therefore it didn't really matter, so I will be voting on this.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jack, all right, so at this time, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to go ahead and ask for an I vote, um, all in favor to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Ms. Pellegrino? Motion carries. We have seven point ten, discussion and possible action on the approval of the Ferrara items for discard as provided to the board, I believe it's mostly textbooks and...
And you may see some repeats, some of the items were approved for discard at our June meeting in 2019, and I think they just unearthed as different individuals may have retired or different, I don't know why, but, um, some of them have been previously approved for discard, but there was a mix of items on it.
Okay, thank you, Jen. No clarification on us for a motion?
They're, they're all, they're all obsolete materials that were, um, you know, damaged or, or no longer able to be put to use.
There's nothing that can be salvaged and reused at a third-world country or something?
Yeah, we, we do, you know, especially a large number of the books, we, we tried to be very judicious about recycling wherever possible and providing that to, but even to donate, you know, they require the board's approval for discard.
I make a motion to approve the Ferrara items to be discarded.
Second.
So at this time, any other questions or comments about the dis, items listed for discard at Ferrara? Okay, if not, I'm going to ask for an I vote to approve, all in favor to approve the Ferrara items for discard, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Ms. Pellegrino? Motion carries. We have seven point eleven, discussion and possible action on the approval of the waiver for the bid requirement related to the CTE manufacturing equipment, I don't believe we really actually, we will vote on this, but I don't believe, is the waiver necessary? It's proprietary as well as grant-funded, so it's not usually something the board would vote on, but I think in the spirit of transparency from the business department, it is added to the agenda this evening.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, this is piggybacking off the presentation we received, um, from our, our principals of the high school earlier tonight, in, in conjunction with the discussion we had in finance about, um, waiving the bid requirements so we can order these, order our machines to make sure they are here in time, it is from one vendor, so the bid process will only add cost plus delay the implementation of our program.
In light of the total amount, which is over $200,000, um, and in seeking, you know, board support and approval, um, for the equipment, um, to magnify the importance of the program, we would appreciate if the board would approve it this evening.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I'm all in favor of this new program, I believe everywhere it's going to be a really good thing.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and if we wait, it'll be a long time.
The chips.
The chips.
Long, the chips.
The chips.
All right, so this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I make a motion to waive the bid requirement related to the CTE manufacturing equipment.
All right, second.
Jen, any questions or comments? If not, at this time, I ask for an I vote to approve the waiver for the bid requirement related to the CTE manufacturing equipment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Ms. Pellegrino? Motion carries. Um, that brings us to seven point twelve, discussion and possible action on the B O E receiving, um, monthly assessment reports for math and E L A achievement progress for the East Haven School District, grades three, five, and seven, and again, this is for discussion, but I believe it's something we probably want to discuss a lot further and, such as in a workshop, um, to really see even if something like a monthly report is even feasible, it's just, I think, make sure the board, you know, is able to, um, keep its pulse on the academic achievement throughout the district and those pivotal grade points, so...
I, I, I would like to not put this on the agenda and approve it.
Well, it's on the agenda, we just don't have to approve it, it's there.
Well, no, you have to ask at the point.
No, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
It, it, it's on the agenda.
There was a revise.
There was a revise.
That's right, I apologize, I didn't get that one.
So, again, it's not, it's discussion.
Yep.
Um, on how we're going to do this, something, it's, I think it's just a conversation that needs to be introduced, um...
Do you want to hold a curriculum workshop where Jen can present a little bit more about performance matters and how we can use that system to provide a monthly report? And, you know, I don't know, at the, at that time, we could discuss whether you want that to be a formal monthly report or something that the board has access to, like a spreadsheet or a report that's posted similar to the enrollment tracking form that I'm going to share with you tomorrow.
I, I think that makes more sense, and then just maybe like the quarterly presentation when you actually have an update, um, for us with, you know, with information, I think this is just so board members know and have access to that information.
And we can, and have discussions at some point, yeah.
Exactly, because we have to start figuring out, you know, points on whether...
So prior to our next board meeting, do you want to have a curriculum workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say, I think that's going to be very helpful compared to things that we implemented as far as new policies, and especially with the increase in the time of schools, I think it'll be good for everybody to look.
Well, yeah, I think, we talked about when we decided to in, increase the time, we wanted to know how we're going to measure, if it's, you know, I don't know, lack of better word paying off, I guess, for the, for the time, um...
If, if, if the strategy's being used, show progress.
Yes, exactly, so...
That'll work.
Can I also?
We could do that remotely, can't we, the workshop, if, if, depending on everybody's schedule, or anyone could join remotely?
The curriculum workshop?
Yeah, anybody could join remotely, right?
I, I would like to have.
If we do it in person?
We have to let everyone join remotely, if they want to.
What I've done in the past...
Board members?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and Jennifer could also run it through a curriculum.
Curriculum Advisory Council, what I generally do is we have it in person, and then I screencast where I make comments and show the slides, and then our, you know, deeper discussion is captured in minutes, just so it's, for people who want to just watch quick and get the pulse on what's going on, they can see the meat and potatoes, and then they can, you know.
I just know the new statute out of July first, every board member has to have the option to participate virtually in any meeting, if, if they so choose.
Yep.
Um, till further notice.
Sure.
So, yeah, the, the capacity to look at data will be, you know, with many of our, the performance matters will be much easier to sort of pull together reports at your convenience, you know, provided the data has, you know, is within the assessment window, which we have posted in our assessment framework.
Yeah, this is something that I definitely...
Benchmarking too, but I'd like to talk about that, too.
Yep.
All right, so, as we know, we'll set up something, Jen, think of some dates that you're available and would be ready, and, you know?
Absolutely.
I'm sure many of us can accommodate your, your time.
Yes.
All right, so, a, at this time, I'm going to, uh, mention discussion concerning future addenda items, as always, I encourage you to both email myself and the superintendent to go over items, did you have something else to add?
I would really like to have a policy subcommittee meeting.
Oh, yes, yes.
Between now and our next meeting, because I'd like to bring forth the COVID policies that ended in June and reestablish those for 2021, '22 in accordance with the new guidance that I'm anticipating, so it would be beneficial to pick a date now, if, if everybody has their calendars and we can do that.
Sure.
And can I just throw in there that some of these policies or this, um, stipulations from the state are still coming in, correct?
Yep.
And they're going to continue to change.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Um, yeah, in, in person or virtual, are we doing the policy subcommittee?
I, I, I...
Well, it could be either, actually, so it's...
But, but when you plan for virtual, I think we should plan for incoming, and then if you, you know, people can come virtual.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, um...
Otherwise, it's going to, everything just, you know, becomes haphazard.
If we could do the seventh, I know Tuesdays generally work for everybody, but that's a week before our regular meeting, so we can do a subcommittee, and then whatever we decide on, we can put on the agenda.
I thought, the seventh is your first day of school?
No, the 31st is.
Next Tuesday.
We would have one week under our belt.
Oh, I apologize.
We'll be ready for summer vacation, my...
It is Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah.
I generally prefer not to do, uh, you know, things on Rosh Hashanah.
I have a conflict with the seventh.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Wednesday work for anyone? Does Wednesday?
Wednesday, the eighth is fine with me.
Works for me.
Okay. Wednesday, the eighth it is.
All right.
What time?
Six?
Not five.
Five thirty? Five thirty?
Yeah, five thirty, please.
Okay.
These five o'clock's are a little tight, guys.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to-
I'm with you.
Go remotely access?
Yeah, any meeting a board member wants to attend remotely, they have to be allowed to.
Okay.
Okay, so September eighth at five thirty P M.
At least till the pandemic thing is lifted or, or whatever.
Just to note that the ninth is the Merit Award Dinner, you're all invited by a ticket.
What is that?
The Merit Award Dinner, the kickoff to the Fall Festival, which will be the tenth, the eleventh, and the twelfth.
Where is that?
It'll be at Seasons.
We have a few students, student recipients.
Yes, Nina, Nina Marreros is the student who's being, um, recognized and Erica, do you know what's, what's that guy on the truck? Toby, Tori?
Tori.
Tori Tito is being recognized.
Is that at seven, seven, six?
Yeah, I believe it's six o'clock cocktail hour.
Six o'clock at Seasons.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Tia, did you have something?
I wanted to, um, ask about, I know you're going to come up with it tomorrow, but, um, a chance to talk or at least discuss, you know, look at the enrollment together as a team and I know that I sent you that as a question, but just to talk about it at another meeting to, as we get moving.
Schools are actually, they are still coming in with new enrollments.
Yeah, lots of, lots of movement this week. In and out.
It's always fluid, right?
Yeah.
Crazy.
Even new students.
Um, so I have the enrollment tracking sheet all set to go. I just asked principals to look it over for me, just to make sure that there was